Welcome, everybody. It's nice to see you guys. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Pickwess City Schools Board of Education. It is Thursday, April 27. Mr. Hiddle, can you please call roll?
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Here. Okay, if everyone can stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, after reviewing our minutes from last month's regular meeting, if there are no changes or questions, can I get a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion approved. Moving along to our agenda for tonight, if there are no changes to be made, can I get a motion to approve our agenda?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And moving on to our Upper Valley Career Center report, if Mr. Bostick has anything.
Nothing definite. They've got some plans for some things, but they're kind of in process to be, you know, so they're just checking things out and getting prices and things. I'll have more later, I guess.
Okay, thank you. No one's here for agenda items to speak, so we can move on to the treasures' agenda with Mr. Hiddle.
All right, just two items on the agenda this evening. The first one is financial reports. Were there any questions about those? Next thing is recommended or approval for student accident insurance. We do this every year, but this is for the next year coming up. We check our options, which are only two at this point in time, and this plan to neutral of Omaha has been the best one. And I don't have any numbers as to like who takes it because it's protected information, but I'm hoping people are taking advantage of it. Those are the only two things that I have.
Does anybody have any questions? No. I do just want to bring up a couple of things that I think it might be good for all of us to hear and be reminded of. We have operated in the black for quite some time now, and I just think it might be a good reminder for you to tell us all why that's so important.
So, the district does operate in the black since 2007, I believe is, we've done that annually. The biggest thing for that is stability, right? So, people who come to work here, they have a job here. When you spend everything that you bring in, you don't know if you're going to have a job the next time around, so that is important. The next thing about that is programming, being able to know that when we put programming in place, that we're not going to pull that programming out from underneath them just because we're having a bad financial year. So, having all that planning in place ahead of time and not spending everything that you receive gives you a lot of flexibility in how you move forward, and people aren't worrying about what's going to happen that next year.
Okay, so are there any expenses that you foresee for the next year, maybe two or three, that we do not have at this time?
I'd say the number one expense that we are facing is programming for our severely behaved children. We've expanded our Elevate program, which is a K through 3 program that takes care of just 10 students and costs nearly a half a million dollars to operate that program. So, if we were to continue expanding that, and there are requests for that all the way through junior high level, what does that cost come in at? That's going to continue to be a problem. We've maxed out that first 10, are we going to need another 10? So, those things keep piling up as we move on. So, to me, that's the number one biggest expense that we have to worry about. Obviously, health insurance, while we've been able to maintain our health insurance for two years, we've actually had two years' worth of reductions, all the contracts are now being renegotiated with all the providers. And so, what that means is that they're going to now factor in their inflation, and so the bills that we'll be collecting are going to obviously go up because now everything's more expensive. So, then we're going to see that coming for our total expenses as far as health insurance are concerned. So, eventually, it'll get to us. It hasn't yet, we've been bucking the trend. So, the good news is that some people have seen over 20% increases in the last few years when we saw a half a percent reduction. So, that's a positive thing that we have going.
For sure. So, on the flip side, is there any additional funding that we could be receiving in the near future that would be something different than what we've had?
So, our income tax revenue right now is really the area of growth that we have. The district's been capped on the formula through the state of Ohio, so we're not getting any more money from the state because they say that they're paying us what they can afford to pay us, even though the formula says they should be paying us almost $2 million more. Even if this formula gets fully funded, I think we're going to then see the problem of, then they're going to flip us to, well, your enrollment's down. And our enrollment's down, I think, 800 kids over the last 10 years since I've been here. And so, what will end up happening is that while we're here now, if we really put this formula into full effect and our ADM numbers come into play, we can see that that number drops. So, it does make me a little bit nervous about what that looks like if it becomes wholly funded. Well, it's a good thing because we'll actually have something we can count on. How does that end up impacting us? And the other part of that that makes me a little bit nervous is like local share. So, everyone in the community has received their tax bills, and we pay a lot more money in property taxes because the county auditor was required to raise values on homes by 25% at the minimum by the state of Ohio Department of Taxation. It was not Matt Gerhart's fault, but it was something that he was told he had to do. So, everyone's bills have raised in that process. So, while we got a little bit more money in property tax, that actually ends up hurting us because then we all get labeled in an order of what your community can afford, and so now that makes our community look like they can afford more, so we could see that our state revenues would drop from there. So, those are always, it's a balancing act as these things come along. The backpack bill that is out there being tossed around, that's going to be catastrophic to public education. If that happens, all the quote-unquote "good" kids are going to go elsewhere, and we will be left with educating kids who have severely high needs, kids who got kicked out of the schools because of whatever reason that could be, from making a bad post about a principal to just mouthing off to their teacher. They can just get removed. We don't have that control. We have to educate everyone who shows up, and that's why public education's important. I think our state legislators have forgotten the whole equalizer to socioeconomics is education. How do you get people out from under the government's, you know, need if they are not being educated properly? So, all we're going to do is now create public schools that are going to be taking care of the kids that nobody wants, and that doesn't seem to make sense either. So, anyway, I can get really good on that soapbox and keep going because it's very frustrating to me because that is the one thing the Constitution in Ohio said is that we need to be able to provide a fair and equitable education, and now we're sitting here talking about basically creating a caste system. So, that is a detrimental problem to public education.
Jeremy, what's the, what are the major causes for the loss of 800 kids?
It's happening clear across the state of Ohio. Ohio is having flight to Florida and Texas and everywhere else, just like other states are, and our population is aging. So, when you look at the average age in Ohio, they're not of childbearing age, and so it's just, it's a statewide statistic where our population is not growing as fast as other places are. And so, every district except places like Olentangie, and now you'll see if you go out to like New Albany Plains, local, where Intel's going, I mean, those are going to change dynamics in certain locations, but overall, the population's dwindling. The further north you go, if you go to the Cleveland area, Toledo area, it's even worse than what it is here in central Ohio.
So, we're about in the norm, would you say, of losing?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's not, I mean, it's not drastic every year, but when you, when I went back and looked like, well, what was it when I started here? That is a drastic number when you total it up.
Yeah.
So, every year, you had another 80 and then another 100, and then, I mean, it just starts adding up. So, that's how we, anyway, we'll see how it turns out.
Okay, thank you.
Those are all the things, they're not even all the things, but those are all the things that are going through my head all the time.
Yes.
So, there you go. Libby's smiling because she thinks this is one of the fun stuff.
(laughing).
Every teacher, everybody's going, "Holy cow, this is fun."
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
Yeah, no problem.
Can I get a motion to approve the treasures' agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Jeremy, roll call, please.
Mr. Bostick.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. McManus. Aye. All right, the treasures' agenda has been approved, so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. In a moment, I want to do a presentation with our student success team, but before we do that real quick, I did invite two other people that I'd like to have come up to the mic. Casey Pace is a high school teacher, and with her is Richard Price, one of the students, and she works on some of project-based learning that they do and stuff in the community. And this is just one example of a student that did a really, really great project, but so many of them were great. I'd like for Casey to explain a little bit about what her program is, but, and then let Richard talk about his project because I just thought it was a great solution to something that we received a lot of questions on, and the fact that he pulled all that together and did it, I'm not amazed because he's a great student, but I would like for him to share with you and the public what he has done. So, Casey, if you wouldn't mind, you can adjust that if you need to.
I know, I feel so short.
Okay.
I'm not really that short, but like, is this okay if I just talk in it?
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. First time doing this. So, hi, Casey Pace. So, I do teach the service learning class that Courtney Down started a couple of years ago. This is my first year doing it. So, Richard is one of my students that I had in first semester. It is a one-semester class. We had so many amazing projects come out from these minds. So, you know, Richard really focused on feeding our population. We had quite a few students that were interested in looking at social and emotional learning. I'm currently working with Lucy Weiss to figure out her literacy project because we had a bit of a setback, but like, they're passionate about their topics and they're passionate about doing things that help our community so much. So, the service learning class is basically just meant to provide an outlet for them to come up with a community issue that they see and how they want to fix it. One of my students right now, Myra, is working on potentially bringing some dental assistance in because she talked to Mrs. Michael and found out that there are no CareSource dentists in our community and that there is a huge wait list for the one that's in Troy. So, the kids listen, and they see things that I don't see, and that a lot of the people in our, like specifically in the high school building, that they don't see. So, it's really cool to kind of watch them evolve and to bring out these new ideas, and then the best part is that they figure out the solutions, and then I got to figure out how to make it work. So, that's probably the best part of it. So, Richard's going to talk about his project. He was inspired by Shelley Mitchell, who has a real passion for feeding our students, and so I'm just going to kind of let him go off from there.
Yeah, so with Mrs. Mitchell's help, I saw that I'll periodically help and volunteer at Green Street's food pantry. So, I know that resource is available, but I knew there were more out there, but I didn't know what they were. So, I figured if I didn't, then many people didn't, especially people that need it. So, I, with her help, we determined what resources were available, got those leaders together, and helped create a plan that we could, in the flyer that is in front of you, pass it out within the city so people in need could find those resources that are near to them.
I'd love to take you, Richard, to work through this process and get this organized.
Once figured it out, it probably month to two, somewhere in there, once we really got it rolling.
Great. So, we have had many times, parents will contact us and want to know if there's any food available for their families, and where can they go to do that? And it was something we didn't even really have. We knew of some places, but until Richard put this together in one format, now we have this ability to look at days, it has a map for locations, what they do there. Jeremy's, one of his organizations had a gathering one day, and that organization provided food for them, and they had leftover food from Panera Bread, and it was a lot of food, fresh fruits, salad, bread, all kinds of soup, just sandwiches, and he brought it back, and he's like, "I don't want to waste this, I don't know what to do." So, we went to one of the organizations we were familiar with, and they were, they were closed, they weren't taking any food, and we were, we were like, "What are we going to do with this?" And I went and got Richard's paper, and we found out that one place, only one place on this list, was available to take it. So, we called Westminster, they were going to have a distribution on that Saturday. We were able to get somebody to meet us at the church that Friday evening, we got all the food over to them, it took care of a whole meal for that day, and they got fresh salad, fresh fruit, and things that they normally wouldn't have gotten. So, we didn't waste food, we were able to use your resource to get more food to people, but we have these available at the board. Many times I will see on social media, people will say, "Hey, I need some food for my family." So, when I see those personally, I send this to them, and it's the messenger, so they've got that resource, and it's all because of what you've done, Richard. So, it's a great, great piece. I really appreciate it. Thank you for helping. Do you have any questions for Casey or Richard, anybody?
Richard, I would like to tell you, the First Place Food Pantry in Troy, I know it's in Troy, but they opened up to Miami County as well, so they help a lot of Pickwa people that drive down to First Place, and they will serve full meals, or not, well, full meals, but also like weeks' worth of groceries to families from Pickwa. So, if they can drive down there, that's also another resource that they could use.
Okay.
Good work.
Yeah, that is awesome.
So, thank you for your work, Ms. Pace.
Yeah.
Richard, thank you for your work.
I'm going to add a little thing here because I don't think, I think you should know also that this project also because of Richard bringing everybody together caused new path to open up an additional time that would work better for our families specifically. So, like, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that because because of Richard's actions here, more families have access to these resources, and he has also identified a region that is a kind of a food desert that is on our radar now. I haven't found the right kid yet to do the project, but we have it like in a pen for a later date. So, his work will continue, and I just want to make sure people understand that because this flyer is amazing, but Richard's passion really brought more out in the community, and he really truly did change people's lives with it. So, I just want to make sure, because I'm afraid he wouldn't toot his own horn, you know, so.
Thank you for sharing that. And thank you for being so impactful, Richard. It's fantastic.
Yes.
You're dismissed if you want, or you're welcome to stay if you want. It's up to you. You won't hurt anybody's feelings, okay? So, when COVID hit and we got some dollars to help make up some things and to do some things to take care of school business, one of the things we really wanted to do was invest in our teachers and really make sure we had some strength there to offer, and we have amazing teachers within our district, so we brought a lot of them into coaching positions, as you know, and have been working with them over a three-year period. So, this is our second year, next year's our third and last year of the coaches, but they've done some amazing things. So, this is our student success team, and with that, our leader of that group is Kira Williams, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about the work they've done and where we're heading for next year in our final year of coaching.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to give us some time to share with you what we've done. As you can see, the entire team is here. I thought it would be beneficial for everyone to not just hear me again, but to actually get to hear directly from the teachers who are actually doing the work. So, we are all here. Okay, so, what we want to share with you tonight is, we are the success team, so what has success looked like for us? You know, we have taken on a lot of different ways of coaching. We started off with some streamlined ways, but the team has done an amazing job with working with their buildings to find out what are the best solutions to best support their buildings, and so we're going to just tell you a little bit about all those different ways. The tabs underneath, you're going to hear a little bit first about what our vision and focus was, and where we're moving next year. You're going to hear about teaching studies, you're going to hear about vertical alignment, you're going to hear about rounds and peer visits, coaching cycles, and then last but not least, how we've evolved in our leadership support. Okay? Okay, so, so here's just a little bit of a short timeline. Last year, it was our first year, we brought together a new team, and it was really just about figuring our way through this. What does this look like? Building our team, building capacity, creating our presence, establishing relationships in the buildings with this new role. This year, the coaches have done a really good job with expanding the different, as I've alluded to before, all the different ways that we've supported coaching because, you know, we wanted to get our biggest impact. As superintendent said, we had three years to make the biggest possible impact, so even though we might have started with one or two ways to best support teachers, we really had to expand our repertoire and make sure that we're supporting everyone in different ways. So, that's really what this year's been about. Next year, we're aiming to maximize and get all that we can get out of them, and so we're aiming to touch every single teacher in whatever way is best for them and their learning.
I would just ask when you come up if you can make sure you talk in the microphone so people at home can hear you. Sometimes they'll say they can't hear if we're not close enough to it, so you're welcome to bend it and adjust it there, so, thank you, Katie.
All the way down. All right. Hi, I'm Katie Meese. I'm at Pickwa Junior High.
I'm Sarah Jane Magato, and I'm at PCIS.
I'm Ellie Snap, and I'm at the junior high also. In our first year of coaching, the entire team attended Mike Rutherford's training for strength-based feedback and coaching. Rutherford's research shows that teachers that make, make more substantial growth in the areas that they're already effective. One of the seven tools that we learned about was teaching studies, and based on our experience and our training, coaches at the junior high and the intermediate building felt that teaching studies would be an effective tool to implement so that we could highlight the innate talents of the teachers in this district.
Our goal with implementing teaching studies is to provide a professional development opportunity in which teachers observe each other's instruction, learn from each other's strategies, and build each other's confidence. Teaching studies involves a team of four to six teachers in which they conduct a 15-minute informal observation and a 15-minute debrief session with the observed teacher. During the debrief, positive strength-based feedback is provided to the teacher, and the observers are able to ask questions in order to implement their, those effective strategies into their own classrooms.
Through the teaching studies so far, a multitude of benefits have been observed. Our adult SEL has improved as we're sharing and celebrating positive feedback, which is boosting confidence and boosting morale. Effective strategies have been implemented across classrooms and across buildings, which has had a positive impact on student learning, and as a result of all of the teaching studies that have happened, our schools have been able to make strides toward their building goals for student achievement as well as building collective efficacy.
Hello, I'm Lori Smith, a primary math coach.
And I'm Hope Davis, intermediate math coach.
Another initiative that we have worked to implement this year is vertical alignment. The purpose of vertical alignment is to provide teachers with time to discuss and align those rigorous research-based strategies that lead to student engagement and learning.
Our vertical alignment meetings include subject area teachers across multiple grade levels and buildings. These meetings are facilitated by coaches but are often led by the teacher teams themselves. Coaches, teachers, and administrators collaborate to determine a focus for the, for the meetings. We discuss priority standards, including strategies, common vocabulary, and effective models, as well as best instructional strategies. Throughout the process, they engage in meaningful conversations and actually get a chance to interact directly with the content.
What are some of the impacts of vertical alignment? First, our students benefit from common strategies used across grades. These strategies not only grow in complexity from year to year, but they also provide a common framework for which students can attach new learning.
Because of our work with vertical alignment meetings, teachers have developed new professional relationships and connections that they've been able to use to collaborate outside of the vertical alignment meetings as well.
Hi, I'm Holly Turner, math and literacy coach.
I am Kenzie Kramer, math and literacy coach. We will be presenting coaching rounds. A coaching round is a two-to-three-week mini-cycle that includes co-planning and co-teaching between the teacher and the coach, and all gen ed teachers participate in rounds, and when teachers sign up for a round, they select a subject or instructional strategy as a focus for support.
When the teacher and coach meet to co-plan, they discuss the student needs, they discuss, they establish a goal and discuss appropriate instructional strategies. During the round, the coach and teacher deliver and facilitate lessons together, and at the end, the teacher and coach meet to reflect, and the best thing is that we celebrate student successes.
The pictures just demonstrate the impact on student achievement when the teacher and coach collaborate.
Hello, I'm Leslie Mitchell, ELA coach at Pickwa Central.
I'm Woody Lineer, I'm the ELA coach as well. All right, so, coaching cycles are, they're very similar to coaching rounds, except they're a little bit longer and they're a little bit more intense. So, instead of two to three weeks, we're looking at like four to six weeks of working very intently with the teachers, planning highly engaging lessons with them that are based on the student data. We also make sure that we are doing before and after instruction assessments to make sure that growth is actually being achieved.
And the table that you see shows just a little bit of the data that we have gathered as we work with teachers, and every time that we work with teachers, we want to watch very closely how, what the students are able to do as, with their proficiency before we work with the teacher, and then we measure it again at the end, so that we're making sure that we are aligning with the teacher to look very closely at data and to be able to measure our, how well we're doing as we're working with teachers. We also have asked some of our teachers to share how participating in a coaching cycle has impacted them as a teacher, but also the learning of the students in their classroom, and we're going to share that with you right now.
I wanted to reach out to thank the board for allowing our staff and students to have instructional coaches be a part of our education family.
I immediately asked for a coaching cycle. My coach brought in my resources, but even more so, she was directly related to the growth that my students made.
That power in collaboration with a coach has limitless advantages. So, because of this coaching cycle, I do feel like a stronger teacher who is better prepared to serve my students.
Our students were able to focus on several standards and achieve various goals.
Coaching cycles give myself and my colleagues the opportunity to dive deep into a specific standard. We're able to discuss strategies that have been implemented in the past while also implementing new strategies to support student achievement. The benefits of coaching cycles are impactful to both students and educators.
This year by far has been my students' biggest writing success, and myself as well as their educator. Empowered really is what I ended up feeling, which directly made its way to my ELA team of teachers, and then from there to all of our students.
The last thing that we want to share with you is the work that we've done directly with leadership. This has been really impactful and something that we've been working on. So, if you will, just consider the definition of a cogwheel. Everyone's familiar with a cog, I'm sure. This term alludes to the role of a mechanical cog, one of the teeth on a wheel or gear that by engaging other teeth, transmits or receives motion. So, Gina's going to explain a little bit more about why we're telling you about that. In my position this year, I've kind of made myself the title of liaison between the nine coaches and between administration, because I do bring the history of Pickwa to this job. What I have been able to see is to sit in on meetings, weekly meetings in Spring Creek and at Washington, and hear about other meetings in other buildings. The power that's at that table with your academic coaches
The power that's at that table with your academic coaches, your building principals, and district personnel is over the top. The engagement that these women bring. They are out in the classroom, they are listening to teachers, they're working directly with teachers, they're working with the dyslexia law, they're trying to incorporate structured literacy, which is coming down next year. They're trying new ideas, they're representing your very hard-working teachers in this district. And they sit at the table and they present everything they have to the building administrators. The building administrators are listening because there's a lot they have to say that's great about Pickwa. And they're also giving their own perspective on what we're saying. And then Teresa or Kiara or Tony have even been at meetings and they're giving the district perspective. Well, here's the power. You have the district, you have the building, and now you have all these teachers having a voice at these weekly meetings, finding out the good things that are going on in Pickwa. It's a win, guys. It's a win.
And so, lastly, we just want to say thank you again for giving this opportunity to do this work. And we also want to say thank you to the teachers. Hopefully, some of them are watching. That have allowed us to work in their classrooms and directly impact students. So, thank you. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a really good opportunity today. Hope invited me over to PCIS. We're looking at a new math curriculum and they're trying some things out before we make a commitment to it. And I got to see her coach. And then I got to be a student. I got to be a part of a student group and, and be a part of the lesson so I could experience it from a student perspective. But watching her, I know that they did some pre-planning and then watching them in the class working together. And then afterward, we did some talk and she just was really a perfect example of what all of you are doing with our teachers. And we hear regularly how much help you're offering. So, so thank you for that. And yes, thanks to our staff for being open to it and for welcoming you in the classrooms and being open to that, that next advanced level of, of educating that they can provide our students. So if you have any questions, feel free to, to ask.
I'm just going to add that they're, they're not talking about the behind-the-scenes work that they put in to make all of that happen. And although I don't get to see them all the time, occasionally I'll show up, like I did today, but, and distract them, take time away from what they're doing. But the sessions that they have on a weekly basis to make sure that, that this structure, because it came from literally brand-new, like to what you saw today, incredible group of people, and they put in a ton of work. So, it's pretty special.
Yeah.
As Tina said so eloquently. So, thank you.
Hey, Dwayne, I, you know, I just had a question. Do you, do you know what percentage of students do we have that begin in Pickwa MK and graduate?
No, we've looked at that from time to time. It just varies from class to class. But I, I know in the past, like when I was principal of Favor Hill, that was something I looked at because our, our population was very transient. And I tried to look at our overall rating and then the students that stayed at Favor Hill that whole time. I always found the kids that stayed and they were consistent through that three years were always the kids that were passing the test, had good attendance, had stability. Of course, the transient kind of students really struggled, but I think we would probably find similar things. We, we could look at that. It would take time to put it together, but we, we could.
I know. I went to the first year last year and kind of sat there and watched. It was very impressive.
Yeah.
Brought them together and they were, you know, doing a lot of common things. It was really good. Thank all of you. You're awesome.
Yes.
You really are.
Anything else?
So the goal has been, it is being achieved. And then what will happen to these guys at the end of the third year?
Sure.
So if I heard correctly, the goal that was achieved are we...
It's being achieved, right? It's in the process of.
Yes.
And then you have, they have one more year, and then what will happen?
That's a really great question. We believe our goal is being achieved as best as possible. We were asked to impact student, student achievement, but through building capacity with our teachers. And so we are trying to maximize every opportunity with teachers in the classrooms to make sure that when the coach leaves, or the, the goal adjusts or shifts to another classroom, that, that there's capacity that has been built. So that whatever happened that was great, where the students learned, that it continues on going after that. So it's not dependent on the coach being in there and that impact happening. We've worked really hard at that. So we, we're hoping. And we do see the fruits of that, that after the coach comes, leaves, that, that the teachers are continuously learning and growing and thinking far beyond what was, what happened in the classroom at that time. One of the testimonials from the teacher, she started to talk about how she was working with a coach in a cycle for a period of time, but then she went and shared that with her entire fifth grade team. And so when you think about impact, that's, that's a perfect example. We can't touch every single student, whereas tutoring might have limited our direct impact. But when we have teachers who are willing to work with the coach to tackle challenging problems and then go and share with their colleagues and replicate and scale that up, that, that's been our goal. And even from day one, we've been trying to figure out how can we build capacity with the peers. So they've done an amazing job with collaborating with their peers so that all of the learning that's taking place amongst us doesn't just sit with us, that we're trying to inspire other teachers to step out and learn and grow and talk with each other. So some of that stuff we hope will continue to, just continue to build. Of course, it'll look different, so it won't be as much of an impact in terms of having a full-blown team of teachers who are able to do that. But we've been trying to work very hard on what does that after the team impact look like, so that it continues on even afterwards. Hope that answered your question. Thank you. Any other questions? It's a good question.
Thank you so much for being here and sharing. We're going to offer you the same thing we offered them. They didn't take us up for it. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to leave. You won't hurt any of our feelings. So if you've got things to do... Taking notes who's leaving.
Okay, Steve, you take that.
Thank you.
While they're leaving, just a few more things. Tonight is our opening night for the junior high musical. So that starts at seven. It is 37, so people still have a chance to get to that. If not tonight, tomorrow. For those of you that are home listening, it's going to be fantastic, I promise. So I hope people get to that. We did that. And one more thing that I would mention is that we were contacted by the Southwest Ohio Athletic Directors Association. And this year, Chip Hare was selected as their Athletic Director of the Year. They wrote some really nice thing. He's, he was recognized on the 25th of April at a special breakfast for all this region's athletic directors. When I called the guy and we were talking back and forth, his, his exact words were, "He is so passionate. He's a model icon for all athletic directors in the athletic world." A lot of people look up to Chip Hare, he said. So it was a no-brainer in their opinion. And he was really...
Because he's seven foot tall.
Seven foot tall, yes. But he does. He works countless hours and he is well-known in that world. I know when I go to MVL meetings, a lot of athletic directors call him for advice and seek his kind of opinion. So he, he's done very well. So just a shout-out to him. We're very proud of, of him getting recognized for that. And he, he over and over said, "I don't want a big deal made of this." And I wanted to get him here, but he just did not, did not want that. So, so that's good. It's good for him. So that's it for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Jeremy, somebody else is winning awards.
Competition.
Couple more for him, no problem.
I know. He's got them.
Alright, so now you can proceed with the agenda.
Okay. We'd just like to recommend the board approve the list of donations and grants. We had some donations to the Indian Nation Station. We had our Boys Night Out at the Pickwa Junior High School. So some funds still coming for that. Careful Corners is receiving some funds to support that program. That will happen in early June. It's June, right?
August.
That's what I meant to say is August. Veterans Night that we had, still some good donations coming in for that night that we did at the basketball. Pickwa National Honor Society, there's some donations for students going to the Washington DC trip from the junior high school. So we appreciate that. And then the Pickwa Education Foundation donated to the Boys Night Out and some instrument things for the band, the intermediate band to use to, to learn to master their instruments. So again, we appreciate all those. So people that support our students and our schools. Recommend the board approval of the attached list of library books from Pickwa Central Intermediate School for disposal and the removal of inventory for the Pickwa City School District. They're just books that again have been either used, they're tattered, torn, they've, they've been checked out either way too many times, or they're just no longer being checked out. Kids just have no interest in the topic, the title. And once, once it stays in our inventory for so long and it's not being checked out, we discard them. And then they move into new additions for the collections. Recommend board approval of the attached list of technology equipment for disposal and removal from the inventory from our Pickwa City Schools. And again, I, I mention this all the time, but our technology department does a really good job of reusing things and stocking things. So they do have a, a little bit of storage area, so they kind of strip everything they could use for parts and pieces and, and use that to repair other things. Otherwise, it gets recycled. So I think that's it. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a question from somebody about the books.
Yes.
And then another question that they had was how do, could you take, accept donations for books?
We don't typically for the libraries. We would have to go through a process and check them out. And of course, you want them to be high-quality and so on. And then there's the age appropriateness of them. But Teresa does our bookmobile, and they do take donations. And what that, that does is, that travels around in the summer and we, we follow the Salvation Army food distribution. So when people know that schedule, they know the bookmobile schedule. They'll come, they'll put out a wide variety of books, and then students can come and select books to read over the summer. So we are always looking for donations for that. So if they want to donate books, contact Teresa Anderson here at the board office and we will, we'll make that connection.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the superintendent's agenda?
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries and the superintendent's agenda is approved.
Thank you.
So moving along to the personnel agenda with Mr. Lyon.
Thank you very much. I would like to recognize Scott Foster as he is preparing to retire and thank him for his work. Obviously, we're going to thank him again at the end of the year. But congratulations to Scott. And then some highlights there also will be Kelsey Magato is coming back to us. She's a Pickwa grad. Happy to have her back. She'll be teaching at PCIS. And then we've got Megan Marsh, Marsh will be a new teacher for us at Pickwa High School in math. Danielle Miller at the high school as well, American Sign Language. And then Kevin Reeder just started with us as a custodian. So I wanted to highlight those, those new folks coming in. And then outside of that agenda itself, are there any questions from the update that I sent? Anything at all? We're going to have a transportation job fair, because as you know, that's been a challenging area for us to keep staffed. We have great people, but it's been some challenging times with transportation, as everybody in the state's had. So our folks got together and they decided that, they thought that would be a great idea. So of course I thought, yeah, fantastic. So when, I believe it's June 3rd, we're still working through some of the details, we're going to have people come in and learn about what it's like to sit behind the wheel of a bus, get that experience on our grounds, obviously, and then have drivers there to talk to them about what it's like, because I think people don't really understand what that job's like. And the fact that you can have full-time pay with benefits throughout the year. And most of our drivers like to say, unless they have a bad day, that's a really fantastic job. And so we're going to do that in June. You'll start to see some information coming out on social media. They're very excited about it, which is great. And I think it will generate some pretty unique interest to get people into our department. So, anyway, that's the other update for personnel and...
When did you say that was going to be?
I believe they've got it scheduled for, I tried to pull it up here, but we just met on it the other day. We have another meeting coming up next week. We're planning June 3rd. And we're going to host that in the student union, because we like to show that off as much as we can, because it is pretty fantastic. So we'll have some courses in there for them to take and just different things to learn about what the process looks like to get the CBL with passenger. And the fact that we do all, almost all the training to, to get them there. So develop some comfort level for people and hopefully get more, more folks in that department for us.
And those guys are super creative. I'm sure Lysheen and that group will have something very, very fascinating.
So we met, we have a tech meeting once a month in here. And the other day, they were just so excited about everything they were planning to do. And I thought, I love it. Let's run. So they have another, we have another meeting planned, I believe, for next week. And then shooting for the stars for the, the first ever transportation job fair. I look forward to seeing you all there. And yes, we will train you. So that's, that's all I had. Are there any other questions?
I do actually have a question. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So the ASL teacher is going to make the second, correct? Or am I incorrect about that?
That's a replacement position.
Oh, it's a replacement?
Yes. Yes. That is. Good question.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I get a motion to approve the...
Move. Second.
Okay. On, oh, Jer, Mr. Hiddle, please call roll.
Mr. Frazier.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Bossid.
Aye.
Mr. Mitchell.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries and the personnel agenda is approved. No old business. And for new business, we have two items.
Policy updates. You, you've got those. You've seen them. They're mostly just language types of things. Any questions on any of those particular things? This is just the first read. We'll come back for a second read before you approve those.
Okay.
Okay. Second is, we continue to just watch Wertz Stadium and Roosevelt Field House. You know, it's one of our oldest facilities and we're doing everything to maintain it. We don't, we don't put lots of money into it because it's really aging and we want to make sure that we're, we're using the money wisely. But with our insurance checks every year, we continue to look at the safety of everything. And they've noticed some deterioration in the visitor side of the bleachers at Wertz. When we looked at getting them repaired, it's going to be over $116,000. And we, that's a lot of money. We don't have a lot of people that sit there for, for soccer games. So our thoughts are, we would use the home side, split it, some, some places do that, and let people sit on one side, on the concrete side. And we would take these down rather than try to repair them. It's, it's a, it's very costly to, to repair. So...
Increase in parking spaces while we're at it. Then we can fill that in with, it should already gravel underneath it. We can really make that into some extra parking that doesn't exist.
Could people bring lawn chairs and sit on that side? I mean, if they wanted to watch?
Sure.
Like, like, you know, the little PYSA games, people bring lawn chairs?
Yeah, they wanted to.
If they park over there, they're going to just set up a chair and just watch?
Yep.
It's just, I mean, it's, it's just $116,000 for...
Thing that seven people sit on in a year.
I guess not. It's barely used.
Do we know what it takes to, how much it'll cost to remove?
We, we don't. And I think part of that's going to be if somebody wants it for some reason. So we're going to put it out there to see if anybody's interested in it. Because there may be somebody that, that needs it or needs it for parts. We're checking with Farnham because they may want to part it out. And we've talked about, we could get our own, our own hoe and we can take it down and, and take it off and recycle it. I mean, we can scrap it. We can scrap it. So we, we'll see. I mean, if, if Farnham has the, or anybody else that needs the parts, bleachers, needs parts, then let's part it out and scrap the rest of it. So.
Bathrooms concessions are all on the home side, so it's convenient. People can walk in and sit over there.
Sooner the better.
Okay.
So the home side is enough for most games?
Yeah. There's plenty of seat.
Richard's back there shaking his head like.
Yeah, there's plenty of room.
Plenty. So, and it, and, and, and we've talked about this for a while. And just, we, when we went and got them inspected this time and got the bill, and it was like, oh boy, not, not good. So it's just, they've come to their end.
Okay.
That's it.
So we don't need to vote on anything, correct?
Correct. There's, there's at this point no expense and we'll see what plan ends up. We just wanted you to be aware of the situation unless you said, hey, we want to spend $116 and fix them. I mean, we're, we'll let you make that decision. But we were like, I don't think that's probably a good idea.
Yeah, I, that sounds reasonable. Okay. So nothing from hearing of the... Okay, so nothing from hearing of the public on non-agenda items. So our next regular meeting will be May 18th here at 6:00 PM. And now, can I get a motion to move into executive session where no action will be taken? Correct?
Second.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we will now move into executive session.